Twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh three P M. Is Pastor Magdalene here? No, he's not, so we're gonna ask Councilwoman Katrina Manning to do the invocation and Councilmember Patterson to do the pledge of allegiance, please. Her mic's not working, because her light is on.
Can y'all hear me now? Okay, it's working.
I can hear you.
All right, bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for tonight. We thank you for blessing us. We ask that you continue to bless this city, bless this council as we move forward. Lord, we thank you for our friends and family. We ask that you protect us and keep us safe. In Jesus' name, I pray. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Can we have all our veterans stand up first, as we recognize you guys? And then the rest of us can be joining them.
Hand up your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is just one nation under God, indivisible, with justice. Thank you, guys. The city clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation, and I would like to introduce Ms. Smith, Tripepe Smith. Did I pronounce that correctly? Tripepe, oh, okay, I got it right. You're gonna be talking about branding and marketing. Okay, ten-minute presentation, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kendall Lowry. I'm a junior business analyst with Tripepe Smith, and I'm here today with Kirsten Wunger, our senior graphic designer. And our partnership with the City of Hawthorne in the past has encapsulated media relations and social media monitoring. And today, we'll be chatting with you guys about potentially expanding that partnership into a branding project. And so now, I'll pass it off to Kirsten to discuss our branding ethos.
Thank you, Kendall. All right, so just a quick review on branding and why branding matters to cities. Branding is the foundation of all communications. You know, it gives communities, it gives your communications a voice. Can you hear me better now? It gives city communications a voice, makes them more distinct, more recognizable, louder. It also provides consistency, and the more consistent your brand is, the more it helps to build confidence and trust that's necessary for compelling communications. Some key words that you're probably used to hearing associated with the word "brand" is growth and sales, customer awareness, success. But how does that translate into cities? So growth, you can think of growth as investment, right? Investment in your community, investment in businesses. Sales would equal engagement, a higher level of engagement. Customers is your community, awareness is your reach, and success is your impact. In order to have impact, you have to have good content and good distribution. So, you know, you can have great distribution but terrible content, or you can have great content and no distribution, and you don't have the same kind of impact. So why Tripepe Smith when you could go with others? We're experienced. Tripepe Smith has helped many public agencies raise their branding to where it needs to be. We're also perceptive. We turn research and community engagement into brand insights and inspiration. We're also creative and practical. Our team infuses brands with originality and creativity while also making sure that the brand works on a practical level. I'm a firm believer that form of what should always follow function. We also have a lot of local government experience. Tripepe Smith has deep experience working with local government across a comprehensive spectrum of creative and communications categories. We live and breathe the local government level, so we understand the nuances of their branding. Our civic experience means we are adept in navigating the process of outreach, presentation, review, and approvals. As communications experts, we know not just how a brand should look, but also how it should work for public agencies. And here are some examples of some brandings that we've done in the past. For the City of Norwalk, they kept their city seal, but they wanted to update their logo from what you see on the left to what you see on the right, so giving it a more modern look, also changing out the colors, the color palette. For the City of San Leandro, they expanded and added on a city logo in addition to their city seal. For Livermore, we did more of a refresh than a rebrand. We kind of updated the colors and expanded their logo library so that they had more options of different alternate variations. Snowqualmie, which is actually in Washington, we did a new logo for them, and an example of also an updated PowerPoint deck that we did amongst a lot of other things, and then we also updated their newsletter to match their branding. For the City of Tracy, we worked on a program where we created branding to help their tourism and economic development. And for Pivot Charter, another example where we updated their logo. And Solana Energy Alliance, where they combined with some other organizations, so they actually created a new organization, and we came with a brand-new logo and branding system for them. And for our scope of work, Kendall's gonna go over that with you.
Thanks, Kirsten. All right. So there's several different options that we'll be able to pursue within this partnership with y'all, the first of which being logo development, which would encapsulate different brand research, a kickoff interview with a committee that you guys would assemble. We would provide drafts for a review. We would finalize the design, and then we would provide a logo library. The second addition we could add on would be a style guide slash cheat sheet that you all could apply to all city communications, a presentation template catered to the City of Hawthorne that you could reuse in various presentations, as well as Word templates. And again, we would provide drafts and be able to revise all of these assets as you all see fit. The third potential option would encapsulate branding materials such as business cards and email signature for city officials, presentation backgrounds like for Zoom or Teams when you're video chatting with people, as well as a Canva brand kit that you guys would be able to use within designing flyers, social media posts, et cetera. And then the fourth and final option that we could tag on would be collateral pieces such as a folder specific to the City of Hawthorne, a four-page pamphlet, three one-page inserts about the City of Hawthorne, and again, drafts and revisions on all of these assets. Thank you so much, and then you'll be able to contact myself or our account manager, Jennifer Vaughn, if you have any questions.
Excuse me, ma'am, do you have a sample of what Hawthorns would look like?
That's why we're here, we're gonna work with you.
Oh, no comment? You just, you laugh it off, huh? Okay, I couldn't get you on that, huh? Through to the chair? Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation. Now, do you guys have any success stories? So when you brand some other cities, the outcome, how did you guys kept following the whatever happened, like for example, economic development? Did the city improve their forecast because of the branding? So do you guys have some data?
You know, we don't have any with us today to share, but we can share that after today. We can be in touch with a staff member, but I know for the City of Norwalk, we did track on engagement online for social media, and we saw a really nice increase. I can't recall the exact numbers, because it was several years ago now, so my apologies for that, but we can get you that information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're considering this.
Thank you so much.
Mr. City Manager, please proceed with the second presentation.
Good evening. We, for our second presentation, we have California Water Service Representative David Robert Thompson.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, and City Staff. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to present Cal Water's rate proposal for the City of Hawthorne contract operations for capital years twenty-three to 2026. As Vaughn mentioned, my name is Robert Thompson. I'm the local operations manager at Cal Water, and joining me tonight, this evening, to touch on the more complicated rates portions of the presentation, is Greg Milliman. He is our Vice President of Rates and Regulatory Affairs for Cal Water. So jumping right into it, I want to touch on a history of Cal Water and our operations in the city. We'll briefly provide an overview of what infrastructure improvement projects are, and the impact, and then we'll transition over to Greg, and he'll touch on the rate proposal that we have in mind for the City of Hawthorne's contract operations, the drivers of which, the overall impact as seen by an average consumer here in the City of Hawthorne, and then an opportunity for questions if there are any. So really quick, in the City of Hawthorne, Cal Water has been a contract operator since nineteen ninety-six. We have been awarded the second of two now fifteen-year-term contract operations with the city, the lease. We serve about forty-five thousand people therein. It's about half the population of the City of Hawthorne through about sixty-four hundred service connections. We've got one active groundwater well that we are currently using, and then another in queue looking to get that thing spooled up before the end of the year, and it's an exciting capital project that we've been working on for several years now. Five storage tanks, seven and a half million gallons of storage, and one centralized water treatment plant underneath the big blue ball in the sky over there, the Hawthorne Water Tower. So before we jump into the projects, I want to touch on the importance of infrastructure investment. U S E P A says nationwide, six-hundred-and-sixty billion dollars is needed to get the United States' state of infrastructure up to par. They've graded us a D, the American Society of Civil Engineers, and by their metrics, one in four individuals in the nation do not have access to clean, reliable drinking water. That statistic is personally unacceptable, and it's something that Cal Water strives to make sure it does not happen in any of our service territories. Pictured right here on the left is the first example shown of an infrastructure improvement project and what that means. That is shown, it's a blue backwash tank is what it's referred to, an integral part of infrastructure tied into the water treatment plant on site. A large project was kicked off in mid-2022, and we finished it in that same year to replace an existing asset after it served twenty-five years of its life. It was corroding, there were significant leaks around the foundation, and in order to ensure continuous, reliable operations, that asset was replaced. And again, a picture has, can tell a much more deeper story than anything I can really say. So up here on the left is one of the beating hearts in the City of Hawthorne. I appreciate working with Vaughn and City Staff to conduct a site tour of not only this particular facility as it stands now, but also the drinking water treatment plant. On the left shown in the photo is what the state of affairs was prior to an infrastructure replacement project. Those are the primary pumps that provide water and pressure to the City of Hawthorne, and as you can see, they were corroded, they were leaking, it was an unsafe working environment, so we worked with City Staff to propose several projects that have then since been executed. On the left, right in the photo, bright, shiny, and new, those pumps are working fantastically, and it provides the system a much more reliable state of affairs when it comes to fire flow, emergency supply, and readiness. And another, again, visual example of what an infrastructure improvement project really means, shown on the left is what you would see. That is a four-inch cast iron main, of which many exist in the City of Hawthorne. Tough to see in the photo, but there's about a softball-sized hole in that pipe. That's what's referred to in the industry as a blowout, kind of like a baby's diaper, but a touch bit worse. So that's what we're looking to avoid in terms of an infrastructure improvement project, as opposed to a spontaneous event that then knocks out potentially several city blocks with water service. We look towards what we completed and accomplished on the Prairie Main Line Replacement Project, a planned systematic replacement project that improves fire flow, improves water quality, water supply, and water pressure to the citizens that we serve here in town. So with all that aside, I'll pass it off to Greg. He'll touch on the rate proposal and then wrap up the end of the presentation.
Good evening. I don't know how I'm gonna be able to follow up a blowout diaper, but I'll do my best. So what Robert just explained to you all is everything he does to maintain and operate the system. And where me and my team come into play here is we take that information and we make estimates to the future of what the cost to operate the system will be, and then we compare that to the rates that we have now, and if necessary, we make rate adjustments as part of the reason we're here today. Normally, we, in our regulated operations by the Public Utility Commission, will do a rate update every three years, and it's kind of a good practice to get into to make sure that, you know, your budgets are up to date, and then the proper rates are being set for the customers that we serve. As you'll see on the slide, I don't know if you can read it.
Can you increase it? It's real small.
Sure. Oh. Who is technologically savvy?
I got a paper.
You got it? Can we get rid of this, so we can make it bigger? Oh, she's got the presentation.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the years twenty-three through twenty-six, we are asking for an increase of one-point-five percent, one-point-six, one-point-nine, two-point-three over that period to collect additional revenues to operate the system. Yeah, okay. On this slide, what it shows, it's broken into two pieces.
Please, again?
Sure. Backspace.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Okay, what this slide does is it does two things. On the left with more of the narrative, it shows you what are the main drivers to increase that is causing the cost to operate the system to go up in 2023. It's principally related to the water purchase costs from West Basin that have continually gone up. There's some other items that are also contributing to it. On the slide, it says seven-point-three million of capital. We will be doing two-and-a-half million of that in 2023. On the right-hand side, that gives you a picture of where all the costs to operate the system in 2023 are. So as you can see, there's over half of the cost to operate the system of roughly, I think it's thirteen million dollars. Fifty-three percent of that is related to the water production cost, so it's a big element of the cost of service. On this slide, what we've found with our customers is they're not really concerned about the revenue increase that we ask to operate the system. What they're concerned about is their monthly bills. So we always put this information in so customers can see that. And on the top bar chart, it shows what our residential customers will have. The bottom bar chart shows what the senior residential customers will have. So on the first, on the top bar for 2023, we're proposing a dollar fifty-one or one-point-five percent increase for 2023, and the chart kind of follows that along until 2026, when we're asking for a two-dollar-and-thirty-seven increase for our two-point-three percent increase. The seniors are, we're asking for a dollar one in the first year, 2023, also a one-point-five increase. This chart demonstrates how Cal Water's typical monthly bill is comparable to some of the surrounding utilities. Shown on here is the City of Manhattan Beach and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. We have not included Golden State on this particular slide this time, because they are in for a rate increase right now, so their rates are up in the air. But as you can see, that this is pretty comparable for the water districts or public agencies in the community. And then the last slide is something new that we presented to City Staff to see if there's an interest to do this. This is a mechanism, as I showed earlier, that the water production costs are a very large part of the overall pie to serve the customers, and if we can flip that from purchased water to groundwater, there'll be savings that the customers can have. And what this mechanism does is it says, it takes, okay, what did you budget for water costs and put into your water rates? And if the amount is less, then you track that and you provide that back to your customers as a credit. It also goes, but it goes the other way as well. If for some reason, something goes wrong with the plant or the groundwater wells, and we need to purchase more water, then it would track that, and we would assess that difference to the customers through a surcharge. So I want to be very, very clear, it works both ways, but it would be, it's a good opportunity if we win and if we get the groundwater plant up and working, that's the best way for us to reduce the cost of service, and so that's what that mechanism does. And with that, that's our presentation, and time for questions.
Any questions from Council?
To the chair.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide again?
This one?
So explain this to me. I got a little bit of it, but I want to fully understand.
Sure.
You're trying to do water production at a lower cost?
Yes. What this does is, right now, we buy a lot of water from West Basin to serve the customers because we're not able to use all the groundwater right now, because there's some problems with the water wells. So our rates are based, the rates that we have now and what we're proposing are based on that purchased water. If we get the plant up and running, it's a cheaper form of water than buying from West Basin, and so there's dollars saved. And what this mechanism is designed to do, it's designed to capture those saved dollars, and at the end of the year, take a look at it, and if there's dollars saved, do a surcredit or credit to the customers. If there's more dollars spent, then it goes the other way, where we would do a surcharge to the customers.
So to build this out, do you have an estimate of what that would cost?
It really, it really depends on, for instance, right now for 2023, we're looking at about six-point-eight million dollars of water costs, water production costs. We won't be able to get there this year, because as Robert said, we're not going to have that well up and running until next year. But next year, if we were able to do that, it would probably swing it by... Actually, I don't want to give you an estimate, because I don't want to give you inaccurate estimate.
I can respect that. We'll have to just bring you back.
That's okay, because it would really hinge, like, let's... Where, we predict how much acre-feet of water? Is it forty-seven? Thirty-seven hundred. So we're predicting to produce thirty-seven hundred acre-feet of water. And right now, about sixty-two percent of that, maybe even more, seventy percent of that is from West Basin.
Right.
But if we can get it to make that the groundwater, that's a lower-cost source of water, and we'd be able to, then what this mechanism does is it passes the credits back to the customer.
Sure. But this is probably another, what, two years from now or something like this?
Next year. Yeah. The goal is to get that up and running for 2024.
Councilwoman Manning?
So you are increasing the rates because you haven't had an increase in fifteen years? Is that?
Oh, no.
No?
No, no.
So you're increasing it because?
Because the cost to operate the system has gone up.
Oh, okay. And then, did you also say that the cost that West Basin charges you went up as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Quick question about your wells, because it's my understanding, you know, these wells around South Bay, when they dig, they find saltwater on those wells, and it costs also to remove that saltwater. So how you guys anticipate on that one?
Please hold. It's an operational question.
Very good question. Thankfully, we're just outside of the saltwater plume that is primarily tucked closer to the North Redondo Beach area. In Cal Water Service territory in Hermosa Redondo, we are dealing with that exact problem. The brackish water plume, it has contaminated several of our groundwater sources, both Cal Water, City of Torrance, and some of the outlying retailers as well. But in the City of Hawthorne, we have a different set of constituents that we have to treat, primarily methane and hydrogen sulfide, two organic compounds that are just... two organic compounds that are just natural in the, in the aquifer. It's just what we, uh, the hand that we're dealt here locally. But that's what the existing treatment plant is already set up to do. So, um, at current, the treatment plant has the capacity to treat up to a little over three thousand acre feet a year and address all of the contaminants, uh, of concern, uh, none of which are salinity, thankfully.
Okay, thank you. So my next question is, you know how the federal government have put a lot of money into infrastructure, right? It's going to come through the states. And some of them is for water, right? I, is to renew, you know, to renovate the pipes, is, is to come so people can get saved and drink, uh, water. So how you guys are going to collaborate with the cities to get some of that infrastructure money into our local area?
Perfect question. Um, we work very closely with Vaughn's team and, and Public Works Director to make sure that if there are federal grants available, that we can incorporate them into our overall capital plan. We have done that. I know the, the city staff has been exceptionally hard at work in securing, uh, FEMA grant monies that can be hopefully put to use in, um, seismically retrofitting the Hawthorne Water Tank, which is a, it's a landmark locally. So we want to make sure that's preserved. But that's a, it's a partnership between, uh, the Public Works Team here locally and Cal Water.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And, uh, for the residents out there, based on what I calculated really quickly, it's about, in about three years' time, your bill would increase about six bucks. About six bucks.
And then there's a...
Yeah.
There's also a public comment, right?
No, not on this.
No, there, there, on June twenty-seventh? It's on the agenda bill, the resolution.
Okay, uh, we have a presentation from our police department. Lieutenant Getz, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, uh, city staff. Again, I'm Lieutenant Ty Getz. I'm the special projects lieutenant for the Hawthorne Police Department. I was tasked by the chief to research the, uh, proposal to purchase a fixed-wing aircraft to replace our helicopter. I was assisted by our pilot, Officer Matt Manley, but he couldn't be here tonight. Uh, I gotta say, I'm super excited to be here. I totally believe in this project and I, and I hope you'll end up being excited as I am. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that went into the proposal. In just a time, I condensed it down to the things I believe you'll find most relevant. Quick history on our project. We started in two thousand by just renting a used three-hundred. In two thousand and one, we bought our helicopter, a nineteen-eighty-nine MD-five-hundred from the Costa Mesa Police Department. It's been our helicopter, Air Fifty-Five, ever since. It's housed at our anger over at the Hawthorne Airport. And it's flown a variety of missions, predominantly supporting our patrol efforts, uh, our neighboring cities in their times of need, as well as undercover narcotic operations at the local, state, and federal level. A lot of considerations went into this, and, and I'll tell you some of the top ones. Uh, Air Fifty-Five is a thirty-three-year-old aircraft. It's currently has twenty-four thousand plus hours on its airframe. Hours on the airframe are how you, essentially, to make an analogy, you measure miles on your car, similar kind of thing. Hours on the airframe, hour on the engine. To complete the analogy, it'd be like you driving a car with a quarter million miles, a quarter million plus miles on it. Uh, the FAA mandates when we have to, uh, replace various parts on it, including, uh, large-scale overhauls of your engine and turbine. They're known as TBOs, Time Before Overhaul. In six hundred and forty-one hours, we have a major TBO on the engine and the turbine. It's going to cost us approximately four hundred thousand plus dollars to do that, uh, TBO. Aircraft itself is worth three hundred to five hundred thousand. It's equipped with an older model, uh, camera. That's in need of replacement, uh, if we hope to remain relevant in, in the law enforcement, uh, community. We're anticipating that our future maintain, maintenance costs are only going to continue as the aircraft ages out. And we are flying well beyond, uh, commonly accepted law enforcement practices. Uh, most departments are swapping or selling their aircraft at ten thousand to fifteen thousand hours, uh, simply for liability concerns. So why a fixed wing? How's it going to benefit us? Well, near and dear to all of our hearts, it's going to be cost-efficient. Uh, it's far cheaper to fly a fixed-wing aircraft than it is a helicopter. Uh, costs are measured in direct operating costs, which in aircraft means it's a combination of the maintenance it takes on the aircraft, plus your fuel. Uh, for a Cessna stationary, the aircraft we're looking at, that's going to be two hundred and sixty-nine per, dollars per hour versus your typical six to seven hundred per hour for most helicopters. Uh, we've taken a look at our air helicopter over the past two years. Uh, we've averaged six hundred and sixty-nine dollars per hour, uh, direct operating costs for that helicopter. If you want to buy a new helicopter, we're conservatively looking at three to four million, probably more than that to include the camera system on it, uh, to, to have aircraft. So we're looking at a savings of roughly fifty-six to sixty-two percent, uh, per hour on money saved. Aircraft, fixed-wing aircraft is more effective in most cases. And, uh, using a high-tech camera system, it allows us to patrol altitudes like fifty-five hundred, sixty-five hundred feet and above, as opposed to a helicopter, which typically is operating at six hundred to eight hundred feet during daytime hours, maybe a thousand to fifteen hundred during nighttime hours. It leaves a obvious auditory presence that our citizens can't miss. Aircraft, you're never even going to know it's up there. Uh, that high altitude combined with high-tech cameras allows you near-instantaneous observations anywhere in the city. Uh, and I'm going to come back to that in a minute with a, with a few, uh, demonstrations of that. Obviously, we don't have a police presence with a fixed-wing flying altitude, at least not one that anybody on the ground's going to be able to notice. You're not going to spook your criminals and you're certainly not going to upset your citizens. Uh, we're going to have much greater range and flight time than we're going to have with helicopter. What it can't do, it cannot land within the city, not unless it's crashing. So, to be fair, we've never landed Air Fifty-Five within the city in the past twenty years unless it was Santa Day or some demonstration or something like that, or, uh, an operation over at the school, uh, as a demo. The helicopter can fly underneath inclement weather, so if we have a fog ceiling of a thousand or fifteen hundred feet, the, the helicopter could fly under that. It can't fly in inclement weather, but it could theoretically fly under that. So could a Cessna, but we just never would. And of course, if we move to a fixed wing, we're going to give up that spotlight and that low-level presence. So, picture is worth a thousand words. So what does that kind of look like, uh, in reality? This is a fixed-wing surveillance. There's a couple of things I want you to pay attention to. This is a mock surveillance, it's not a real one. Uh, in the center right there, you're going to see the altitude ticking off, sixty-six hundred feet. And if you look two spots left of that, it looks like a little tank turret. That's the slant range, one point six miles. So it's sixty-five hundred feet in the air and it's one point six miles from the aircraft to the object it's looking at in the ground. And it kind of gives you a perspective of what modern-day cameras can do at altitude. They can do everything an aircraft can do and more, see the exact same thing, if not better, uh, than an aircraft. And I'll just let you watch it for just, uh, a few seconds, kind of get a feel for what it looks like before I move on. Uh, what you're seeing overlaying that, it's called a moving map system. Uh, those typically are associated with your, your high-tech cameras. And what they do is they overlay streets on there and addresses, depending on how you've set your camera up, so that you're always, you know, situationally aware, wherever you are in the city or outside in the county. So, just kind of a quick idea there. So let's talk about that near-instantaneous response time, because this is the big benefit to the city. This is, this is kind of a, a different paradigm in policing. When you're at altitude with high-tech camera, you have the ability to slew that camera to anywhere in the city because of those two technologies and altitude, technology and altitude put together. So what does that actually mean? So say there's a incident at El Segundo and Prairie Ave, but my aircraft is flying over Aviation and Rosecrans. Instead of flying over like the helicopter and starts looking, he just types the address into the moving map. And what the camera does is automatically slews to that location and focuses on it for you. So you have instantaneous eyes on whatever's occurring. It's certainly going to increase the likelihood of observation and capture of fleeing suspects and allows the police to have a real situational awareness in a variety of situations. It could be fires, it could be natural disasters. Uh, it could be traffic collisions, you take a quick look at and you check the severity. Uh, and it could be multiple incidents at once. So if you have two or three situations going on in the city, you have the ability to slew back and forth, uh, and take a look at them, unlike a helicopter, which it could only circle one incident. So, picture's worth a thousand words again. Uh, this one is just, uh, this is actually a real surveillance, uh, but it's at sixty-five hundred feet, one point four mile slant range. Uh, you can see the overlaying moving maps. And I'll just kind of talk, because you can watch this, but I'm going to tell you what the important stuff coming up is. When they finish this scenario, they're going to have you three simulated calls for service, a hit-and-run, a robbery, and a vandalism. And important things to watch are, one, the altitude's going to remain sixty-five hundred feet, but the slant range is going to change to show you the capabilities of the camera system. Now, this is just a, uh, this is a real-life patrol call, an individual creating disturbance somewhere on the street. And they're just looking around, trying to spot him with the camera before patrol ever gets there. Kind of, you know, where is he? What's he doing? Is it something we need to actually respond to or not? So, i- it's going to take a minute to find him. And I think it popped up on there, looking for a male white with, uh, red shorts and a white shirt.
So, it's him.
Acting, or acting erratically. And he's still at sixty-five hundred feet, one point five mile slant range. And there's our guy on the corner right there. So now they got him, they're taking a look. And, and pretty quick, you can tell what the nature of this incident is. There's, there's a lady standing nearby. And you can tell, okay, maybe we got a little issue here. I would suspect maybe some homelessness, some mental illness, drug problems. But it's something we need to take a look at. So they're just going to keep an eye on it while patrol's responding. They can put out that information. And they're up at sixty-five hundred feet where no one can hear you. You can't even really see you. Nobody even knows what's going on. We're just taking a quiet look at what's going on while we, we broadcast that information to the, to the officers on the ground. And of course, we're taking, making sure that nothing happens to our citizens, doesn't go over and attack the lady or something like that, in which case, we could ramp up our response. And it applies the same way. When you have these kind of assets, you can look down and if you need to de-escalate your response, it's just as easy. The law enforcement shows up. Uh, one of the things at the end of this clip, I want you to pay quick attention to, because they're going to zero in the camera so you can actually see how far out they are and how far, how far up they are before they start the scenarios.
Is that the camera that this, uh, plane is outfitted with? Or is it separate?
I was going to say that little surprise to the end. I want you to imagine this camera system but amped up forty to fifty percent. That's the camera that we're looking at. Yeah, I know, he stole the thunder there, Mayor, but it... But, this is a good camera. The camera we're looking at is, is a fairly incredible camera. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. Camera we're looking at is probably can read the license plate on that car down there. So here we go, that's a zoom out. Kind of shows you why nobody can hear and see. Now they're going to start the scenarios. So here it is, a hit-and-run's going to come up. Altitude's going to remain the same. Watch the slant range on the left. So hit-and-run, swivel over, three point seven miles. Looking for, looking for a dark SUV with a white top. There's the victim vehicle. And you can imagine they're screaming on their phone, it's got hit by a car, they're driving away northbound on this street. Hey, okay, we'll swivel the cameras up. Uh, three point nine miles, there it is, dark SUV with the white top. Range is four point two miles. Okay, robbery in progress, same kind of thing. Moving map system, you simply type in the address, the intersection, whatever you want. You get the camera to automatically slew in that direction. Intersection, three point seven miles. There you are, you got a gas station, you got a seven-eleven. You're already looking, you're waiting for further information to come in. The clerk's on the line, he's, you know, screaming this, that, whatever. Uh, eventually, he's going to tell us, hey, the bad guy's leaving out the front door. He's wearing a black outfit, and there he is. We're still three point three miles out, flying in that direction, but we're already putting out information to patrol. About, hey, here he goes. He's heading out towards the street, he's getting in a car, whatever the case may be. So vandalism just occurred, low-grade crime, but certainly a quality of life crime that generally irritates our citizenry. A lot of time, by the time you get here, they're already gone. Watch the slant range on this one. Four point six miles. They're zooming in on the intersection and, you know, citizen on a phone saying, hey, this guy just spray painted on a wall. And they're going to come up with a description pretty quick. It's going to be a male white in a red shirt, I believe, or a jacket. There it is. Start looking around, and there he is in the bottom crosswalk, crossing the street. For all levels of crime, this is kind of one of those, you know, revolutions in, uh, how you do policing. Instead of low and slow and everybody knowing, you're up high with, uh, better optics. I want to show you one more video. This is pretty extraordinary. I'll let you look at the altitude real quick. Ten thousand plus feet. Slant range, three point nine knot miles, nighttime. And this is a real pursuit. They just happened to be at the altitude, they slew over, picked it up right away. They're going to flip over to infrared, because you get a better, uh, view at that. There they go, they flip over, they're on the pursuit. That, that one's a real one. Uh, in this day and age, we cancel a lot of our pursuits due to liability, if it's low-grade crimes, just fleeing or something like that. This particular case, you're already on it, you can cancel the pursuit. Aircraft can follow it, low, I mean, high. Nobody knows, the guy doesn't know until he lands, parks, gets out, then we can direct units in. That's a split-screen moving map, that's, uh, another, another way of watching. It lays out the streets, gives you the helicopter perspective. This is what the TFO's doing in the back of the plane up there. So it's pretty extraordinary stuff. I like it. A fixed wing is more adaptable for our future missions. There's a lot of money out there, uh, asset forfeiture and grant monies, uh, in certain, in narcotic surveillance operations. That's how we funded a large part of our air program to date. Those partnerships, though, generally apply, they generally require greater speed to get to where they need you. You certainly have to have longer time to follow narcotics traffickers and enhance range to, uh, fulfill any possible local, state, or federal mission. Uh, I'm pretty sure most of you heard about, uh, the fentanyl pill seizure that happened about a month ago, a million pill, fentanyl pills seized. That was one of the guys on our local, state, federal team. It occurred in El Segundo. A lot of people don't know, that was a fixed-wing aircraft that followed him all the way up there. Uh, and then over to El Monte, where Air Fifty-Five assisted it on the arrest and foot pursuit of the actual guys when they, when they took off. But, uh, those are the kind of missions that bring in money. Uh, the UAWC grants, Stone Garden grants, those are large, uh, buckets of federal monies that can certainly assist us in our future, uh, air program. And of course, there's the possibility of regionalization. And I know that's always been a sore topic because our neighbors have not jumped on board with us and I think they've not jumped on board for two important reasons that we can solve. One is the noise issue. You know, they just, they'd rather we have the aircraft and, and deal with the noise issue than, and just help them when they need us than putting some money in the pot and being part of it. Uh, with the aircraft, there's not going to be any noise that you're going to discern. You're not going to even see that aircraft. The second thing is we're in tightly controlled airspace. Uh, at the helicopter's altitudes, you cannot cross LA airspace because they're landing and taking off. At sixty-five to seventy-five hundred feet, you can cross it all day. It's, it's, it's open airspace, we can move all the way across. We can cover the entire South Bay. You add in those optical cameras and we can look anywhere in the South Bay in a relatively short amount of time. I think the possibility at least exists that our neighbors may get on board a little bit. So, conclusion, uh, adding a fixed wing is certainly going to save us money. So conclusion, adding a fixed wing is certainly going to save us money. It's going to increase our capability and response time, our eyes on scene, and extended airborne operations. It's going to reduce our noise signature and all of them, I hope. And it's going to allow us to expand our mission footprint. We have the possibility of regionalization. We've got increased partnerships, and I hope that's going to increase our revenue streams to support this program for the next twenty years. And of course, we're going to catch more bad guys, I think, in the city doing crimes. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if I can answer them, concerning the aircraft.
I don't know if this is information you could give out, but what's the flying time for the helicopter versus up in the air time coverage?
We have a two-hour tank, main tank, on our helicopter. We put an extended tank on there that will add maybe another hour at the most. The aircraft, you can get about six hours on their main tanks. It has extended fuel tanks, so you're pushing almost seven to eight hours of airtime. Now, that's a long time to fly, but it's got the capabilities to do it.
If you need to be up there, right?
Right.
And the question with the flare, can I still ask that now at this point, or do we need to wait?
No, no, as you can ask.
Okay, so does the plane come with the flare, or do we need to buy a new flare?
That's the one item that we have to put on the aircraft is the camera system, which I believe both are on our...
Both are on the...
Proposal, yes.
Proposal, okay, good. Anybody else?
To the chair. Well, Hawthorne will always, you know, in the front of innovation, so...
I think so.
I believe, you know, the Hawthorne Police Department have done an outstanding job, you know, doing community policing, all those beautiful programs that we create, you know, Coffee with the Cups and the trailers and stuff like that. So it's understandable that that ala cop is getting old, and believe it or not, it is noisy, that ala cop. So I'm definitely in favor of the airplane because it's much smoother and it captures fantastic image from, you know, above the six thousand feet. That's great. So I think we need it.
Pretty convinced it's going to make us a leader in the air support program.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I would be curious. At this point, you're saying this is going to replace the helicopter?
Yes. Well, that's a decision above my head, but yes, that was the general plan.
And realistically, would there be an opportunity for us to maybe keep it and maybe, if needed, use it when we have to?
I think the possibilities are limitless, whether we keep this helicopter or down the road, federal revenues. We make ourselves so useful that we're able to purchase a more modern helicopter, could even be theoretically part of the program. But those would be discussions, I think, between City Council and the chief. There he is.
Uh-oh.
Thank you for saving me.
You're welcome. Great question, Mayor Protam. Thank you for asking that. So ideally, if we follow through with this proposal and we're able to acquire a fixed-wing aircraft and acquire the technology that we need to make it effective for our uses here in the city of Hawthorne, the ball is really in our court in regards to the existing helicopter. So we were looking originally to perhaps put our existing helicopter for sale to recoup some of the startup costs to start the fixed-wing aircraft program. But there are numerous options that are available to us. We could theoretically mothball it just in case we need it in the future. But one thing that I would ask that the council be very, very considerate of in this aspect is there is diminishing returns. Every day that we own that helicopter, the resale value of that goes down, even if we're not flying it anymore. So right now, we're kind of in that tipping point scale where the value of the helicopter is almost negated by the future maintenance costs of it. And if we keep it, even if we fly it at a reduced percentage of hours each year, we're eventually going to hit that, what did you call it, Lieutenant? TBO?
TBO.
Which is going to exceed the cost of the helicopter, the value of the helicopter itself. It's almost like taking my car in for a tune-up, and my car is worth ten thousand dollars, and it's going to cost me twelve thousand dollars to keep it on the road. So those are fiscal decisions. If you're going to ask me personally, I'd love to keep them both. But we're trying to be good fiscal partners for the city. And then I would add one other thing, the funds that would take to start up the fixed-wing aircraft program, regardless of what we did with the existing helicopter. These are all semi-restricted funds that have come from our prior partnerships with other law enforcement agencies through narcotics enforcement. So there is zero effect to move forward with this program to the general fund.
So you're looking at potentially inquiring the Cessna and then at some point putting the helicopter for sale?
Correct.
And then those monies would go into just pretty much to offset the cost of the Cessna?
Correct. It would go back into our asset forfeiture account, which is where the purchase cost of the Cessna would come from.
And so for what I also understood, the mechanics behind it is cheaper to service the Cessna versus the helicopter?
That's correct. While I'm not an aircraft mechanic, it's my understanding that it's much easier and more cost-effective to maintain an airplane than it is to maintain a helicopter.
If we could maybe, well, obviously, it's up to the council, but during the exchange, have a certain period of time in which, you know, you're looking to do that, like the exchange, or, you know what I'm saying? Not immediate, but ultimately set a date where ultimately that's going to be put out to the universe that it's for sale, right?
Absolutely. So should we move forward with this proposal? Should everything fall into place? I would actually be very grateful for that opportunity to kind of maintain both aircraft for a short period of time to make sure that we have not made an error in judgment in trying to make this giant transition to a fixed wing.
Sure, and that's my thought. My thoughts, too.
Thank you. So we appreciate that consideration.
Thank you. To the chair.
Yes.
So I was wondering, the insurance for, what's the difference between the insurance for the planes?
Okay, so I can't speak to the actual cost because we were having legal through the city attorney's office look into the insurance cost, but I do know for a fact that the insurance on the airplane is cheaper each year than the insurance for the helicopter.
Okay. And then the other question that I have is how often would the plane be used? How often would it be in the air?
So you heard Lieutenant Getz mention earlier today that basically the flight time of our existing helicopter on a full tank of gas, if we're going into the reserve tank, which is an added feature, an extra per se, you know, like I want the full-blown stereo system in my car, so I might pay a little bit extra when I buy it, is approximately three hours. So the regular helicopter flies for two hours, and then the extended-range tank gives us one additional hour of airtime. Now, we can land that helicopter and refuel it as many times in a ten-hour shift as we need to do. But generally speaking, the helicopter does not fly beyond that, three and a half hours perhaps in one shift.
Oh, so you'll be using it daily for three hours?
Or for the days that it's there. So what we do is we land the helicopter, and if there's a relatively serious call, we'll take off and we'll address this. What the airplane allows us the utility of having is for less cost, I think that Lieutenant Getz's presentation said about two hundred and seventy dollars an hour.
Right.
So for less cost and more loitering time, that aircraft can be in the air for six, maybe even six and a half hours if we're flying conservatively. And you saw the camera technology and how quickly we can slew that camera over to look at any location in the city of Hawthorne because we're flying at a higher altitude and also be a much greater regional resource for our law enforcement partners throughout the area.
So technically, we wouldn't be using it like every day? It'd be like a case-by-case basis?
So the way that we, I don't foresee, I do not personally foresee a change in the mission of the air program. So the reason why we have the helicopter is to be supportive of our police officers on the ground, right? So we want to give our police officers as much information on every situation that they might be rolling to. But the utility of the airplane, because it will be in the air longer, we wouldn't necessarily send the helicopter up from the Hawthorne Airport to go fly over the scene of a reported traffic collision. But if the airplane's already in the air and all it takes is slewing the camera over to the intersection of El Segundo and Hawthorne Boulevard, our officers will know exactly how serious that collision is before they've even gotten within eyesight. And this is where I'm a huge proponent and supporter of this program. As Lieutenant Getz mentioned, we can ramp down our responses, too. All of us have been on the streets in Hawthorne and seen a Hawthorne police car go by us like we're standing still with lights and sirens on. But if that airplane's overhead and said, hey, these two cars, like, they exchanged paint, their cars dented, then those officers can shut down their lights and sirens and respond to that call in a much more appropriate fashion. So it's a huge utility, and it would be a huge plus for us.
Yeah, I mean, that camera is amazing, and I love the idea that we don't hear noise because that's one of the things that we get complaints about all the time is the noise. So, you know, showing those videos were just amazing in that timeframe where you're able to spot what's going on and see, you know, stuff like the guy that was erratic and stuff like that. So I can appreciate that because we often see where people respond to something and not necessarily knowing that this person is erratic. But being able to see that beforehand is really awesome for our department. So I concur with Montero when he says that our city is always on the edge of innovative things that we're doing. So that's great. That's another thing to add to what we're doing.
Thank you.
So thank you, Chief.
All right, guys. Thank you, guys. Chief, thank you for your presentation. And I guess I also had that question about how long and when, but that's privileged, that's protected information, you know, need-to-know basis, in the sense of, we don't want the bad guys to hear like what our plans are, right? You guys have determined for the helicopter when it needs to be up there and how long it needs to be, during what periods of critical time. So I appreciate that question because I was thinking the same thing, and I just, you know, I understand why you wouldn't be announcing that. And I know you guys have done all the scenarios, whether you keep this thing, sell it, or you hold on to it for a little bit. So we trust your judgment, and you guys have done a great analysis on all the cases. So thank you.
Thank you. If I can just interject on that, all that credit goes to Lieutenant Getz. He's really done the heavy lifting on this project.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Lieutenant Getz. Great job.
Just talking angles and focus lengths and all this scientific stuff, too. And I caught that. Thank you, guys. Oral communications, the city clerk?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Thank you. I have only one card. If there's anybody else after Mr. Gordon Migo wanting to speak to the council, please form a line behind him. Gordon Michael Migo, shining city on the hill.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the eighth, nineteen fifty-two. Hawthorne is known as the city of good neighbors. It has many essential aspects of life that make it a desirable place. Our community must serve, or strive, I should say, to improve the quality of life for the nearly one hundred thousand residents. We are fortunate to be located in the South Bay area of LA County. In order to become that great shining city on the hill, we must embark on a difficult journey that will require extraordinary effort to achieve important goals. We must, or we need to get our priorities straight. One will be the revitalization of the mall, the downtown area with stores, restaurants, theaters, and more. That will be known, or that could be known as Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza. Another will be the construction of a new hospital complex on the side of the RFK Medical Center that will be part of the Medical and Social Services District. With a concerted effort and without any conflict of interest by our government officials in outreach to obtain available public and private funds, they can accomplish results that had seemed unachievable in the past. Let us work to make Hawthorne great again in the twenty-first century. In regards to the RFK Medical Center Hospital, unlike other privately-owned property, conversion of the hospital site to other uses would be contrary to the following: California Real Estate Law, the Spandens Section, Los Angeles County Land Use Regulations, California SB Nine Legislation, Health and Safety Category. And I might point out, three successive days, there have been articles in the Daily Breeze, of which on Monday, they had a very extensive article that begins on the front page and continues on a full page of the Daily, page four, I should say, of the Daily Breeze. And some interesting comments that were made there. It says, "Like many hospitals across the state and county, the Ronald Reagan UCLA Medical Center is experiencing elevated patient volumes, often exceeding those at the height of the pandemic in both the emergency department and outpatient or inpatient units. Several hospitals in the greater Los Angeles region are grappling with the packed emergency rooms due to a perfect storm of post-pandemic conditions." It includes influx of patients who delayed care during the pandemic and so forth. And so check Monday's edition. It's, like it says, "Hospitals battling overcrowding." It's a very extensive article.
Sorry, your time is up, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name is Roger White. I live at 11923 Cedar Avenue. My wife and I are adding on a room for our daughter, who works every day, but she's one of those people who can't afford the extraordinarily high rents that people have to pay. She has an autistic son who's grown, who can't, is unable to work. We came up against something in the city code where you can only build on forty-five percent of the land of your lot. I find this to be ridiculous. Other cities allow for forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine. Why, what the thinking was, it went into a forty-five percent limit here in Hawthorne, I do not understand. Also, I see these apartment complexes where the utilization is sixty or seventy percent. So it really paints a bad picture where the big developers can exceed this limit by, oh, what, twenty-five percent? But myself, as a homeowner, I can't even get another one hundred and thirty square feet on a sixty-three-hundred-square-foot lot. This is, you know, I think we're kind of, we need to take a look around at what the other cities are doing. I think we're kind of in the stone age on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Name is Radek, three eight two two, West One Four Four Street. At, not your last special meeting, but your other meeting, you were talking about going back and putting the charter up, looking at redoing it, going to Charter City again to beat the state. I hope if you do it this time, you do a clean bill, no pay raises, no thing like that that people will be against. Also, don't be changing the way we vote for the mayor or city council coming up with plans for like maybe trying to break up the city into council areas, you know? Keep it clean, keep it neat, keep it tight, so everybody gets to see it. And maybe we can beat Sacramento because the state legislature, they don't listen to us. At least we could come here and talk to you. We can't get up to Sacramento all the time to talk to you people. That's all I've been saying. Just keep it neat if you redo the charter. And the other thing I got to say is the U.S. Postal Service is having their food drive on Saturday for Mother's Day thing. Why some food? Put it out for the, they pick it up for you. You don't even have to carry it out. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else wanting to speak to the council? All right, if there's no one further, oral communications is close ordered. Madam Clerk, can we have the consent calendar for the city, your consent calendar, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have eleven items on the consent calendar. There are items four through fourteen for your consideration and approval. Item four, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item five, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Item six, resolution number eight three nine six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California declaring its intent to levy weed abatement assessments and set a hearing date on July, I'm sorry, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P.M. for such proposed assessments. Item seven, resolution number eight three nine nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California declaring its intention to levy street lighting assessments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and setting Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P.M. as the time and date of a public hearing. Item eight, resolution eight four zero three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California approving the agreement C one four zero four zero two with authorizing, approving, and ratifying the acceptance of the Grant Year Two Thousand Twenty Urban Area Security Initiative totaling seventy-eight thousand one hundred thirty dollars for the purchase of two Vigilant Solutions trailer chassis. Item nine, resolution eight four zero four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California approving the contract CF two one one three two zero, authorize, approve, and ratify the acceptance of Grant Year Two Thousand Twenty-One Urban Area Security Initiative totaling thirty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-one for the purchase of one Vigilant Solutions trailer chassis. Item ten, eight four zero eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California setting the time and place for a hearing on a water rate increase proposed by California Water Service Company and adopting certain policies with respect to such hearing. Item eleven, resolution eight four zero nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of West One Hundred Thirty-seventh Street and Jefferson Avenue. Item twelve, resolution eight four one zero, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California adopting a list of projects for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four funded by SB One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand seventeen, motion to adopt. Item thirteen, resolution number eight four one three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California proclaiming the month of May two thousand twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Hawthorne. And item fourteen, resolution number eight four one four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California authorizing submittal of the two thousand twenty-three Local Housing Trust Fund application for adoption.
I move.
I'd like to pull some items for discussion, please.
Yeah, she indicated that you wanted to do that before. Go ahead. What items, please?
Item eighteen.
Which one?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You see, I'm looking at, never mind. I'm sorry. I was looking at number eight, but I think I understand that one. But yes, I will have some items to pull later.
I second the motion. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Can you please, next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects that you have items fifteen through twenty-four on the city manager's consent calendar. Can you please proceed by introducing each item to the record?
Item fifteen, construction of speed humps on Haas Avenue and Cimarron Avenue between One Hundred Fifteenth Street and One Hundred Sixteenth Street and West One Hundred Fifteenth Street between Van Ness Avenue and Wilton Place. Item sixteen, progress payment number one in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars fifty cents due to Elegnor Belco Electric of Chino, California for highway safety... for Highway Safety Improvement Project Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, project number 21-06. Item 17, reappoint Dr. Todd, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Todd Sword, Economic Development Consultant for Southern California Edison to serve an additional term of office on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board as a Hawthorne Business Private Sector Representative. Item 18, change of purchase order from Complete Plus, New Look Auto Detail, Rap Bullies, Angels Auto Electric, EJ Ward Incorporated, and South Bay Ford for the current fiscal year. Item 19, memorandum of agreement to continue in the Dominguez Channel Enhanced Watershed Management and Comprehensive Integrated Monitor Plan, Monitoring Plan, in compliance with regional watershed mandates of the State Water Resources Control Board 2023. Item 20, Hawthorne Jim Thorpe Park and City Hall Council Chambers Lighting Project Number 23-07, out to bid. Item 21, between the City of Hawthorne and LaBib Funk and Associates for structural civil engineering services on an as-needed basis. Item 22, appropriation of $43,959.59 from the Police Department Budget 100-2101-222-0-0-47404 for interoperability network of the South Bay and approval of a purchase order in the not-to-exceed amount of $43,959.59 to the City of Torrance for interoperability network of the South Bay. Item 23, approval of the agreement with South Bay Workforce Investment Board to provide business assistance services under the City of Hawthorne's Business Assistant Grant Program. Item 24, approval of additional task for American Rescue Plan Act consulting work with HDL companies to provide a program to assist an urgent care facility to locate to Hawthorne. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 15 through 24?
We have a call for pulling some items. Go ahead.
Yes, please. I want to pull the following items so I could ask some more questions. Item 18, item 21, item 23, item 24.
Okay. I move on all other items?
Second.
Please vote. The remaining two items.
The voting reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item 18, discussion.
Thank you. I don't know who could answer this. I was just curious as to what does this mean when you have a change of purchase order? Is it a vendor change? Is it a cost change? I just needed to understand, you know, why so many vendors? And, you know, what services do they provide?
Mr. City Manager, or who can do that? Do we need him to come up? Or can you do it real quick?
Yeah, I can answer that question. To my knowledge here, it's a price increase that we have to increase the purchase order for the service rendering. So that's why it's coming back to council for approval.
Each of these vendors have a price increase?
Yeah, just come up, man. I think it's gonna take a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and Councilmember. Nothing changed because this basically, because we didn't purchase several cars because of the COVID and delayed the new car. We buy more parts, and this is all the same price, and we just increasing the purchase more.
Those will come to us anyway for approval?
Yes, it's coming to you.
And those increases on all of the across the board? Okay, great.
I move on 18.
A second.
Please vote.
Thank you. Yeah, this is another one. You might want to stay, Akbar.
Can you redo it?
Yep, redo it, please. Oh, sorry.
What's going on?
Sorry, one more time. The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 21?
Yes, thank you. Akbar, I might need you again.
Akbar, just come up.
I'm not sure. This is basically agreement with the City and LA Bib Funk and Associates for structural civil engineer services as needed. So my question is, are we understaffed? Why are we contracting out to third-party services for contractual services? And I'm just curious, we can't do this in-house? Are we short-staffed? What is the reason?
No, because of this funded, this is for seismic retrofit, and this is FEMA grant, and we need to comply with FEMA grant. And basically, they require us to hire a structure engineer because of the requirement.
And those are on all-needed bases?
Yes, on needed basis, because we're doing the seismic for City Hall for Memorial Center and the water tower.
Okay, thank you.
And the structural engineering is a different discipline that might be outside of the public works?
No, we have a structural engineer in building safety and in the public work, regessor engineer, because this is the requirement by FAA, we need to do that.
This is supplemental?
Yes.
Seismicic?
Supplemental services.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you. And I don't know.
The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Item 23, you pulled item 23, 24?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Vaughn, can you maybe answer this? It's asking basically an agreement with South Bay Workforce Investment Board for business assistance services. What services are they going to be offering? What are they doing?
For this item, they're going to help us spread the word regarding our business assistant program, which two council meetings ago, that council voted to move forward with HDL. HDL mentioned that we would reach out to South Bay Web to advertise the $5,000 program that we have. Council approved $50,000. South Bay Web is charging $3,000 to help us with this recruitment of businesses for this program.
Okay, thank you.
Get the card, right?
Yep. Well, different program, but yes.
Okay.
I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Item 24, discussion.
Yes, thank you. Item 24, just curious, because again, we have a contract with for services, consulting services, and the scope of the work, I guess, is to assist in an urgent care facility to locate to Hawthorne.
Yes, so as I mentioned, HDL was here, and one of the directives to staff was to look into bringing urgent care facilities in the city. So what HDL is going to do is see the voids that we have in the city, work with urgent care facilities we have in the city to see if we can help them increase our services and also bring additional urgent care facilities to the city.
Thank you. The reason I'm inquiring about that is because, you know, they emphasized on COVID, right? You know, for COVID purposes, et cetera, et cetera. Just recently, the CDC director resigned. And one of the things that was made mention regarding to the resignation, main reason for the resignation basically says that COVID-19 no longer qualifies as a global emergency. So my, I guess my thoughts are, you know, we have Providence Little Company of Mary, we have the other clinic here, and I believe we have another medical center down on Broad, on Hawthorne Boulevard, excuse me. So I was just curious as to the real need for, you know, these types, these types of entities versus looking for something different that, you know?
Well, if I can add to that, I think Councilman Manning wants to say a word, but we're going to look at the urgent care facilities we have in the city and also see if we can assist them in moving to a larger facility to serve more residents. So it's not just to bring in additional urgent cares, it's to expand the urgent care facilities we have in the city.
Expand services?
Expand services and size and the capacity of people that can reservices.
So one of the reasons, you know, I have some concern with that too is because there are a lot of families that can't afford healthcare and can't afford to go see the doctor, right? So if there's some way we could implement, if there's, you know, a need for more services and more around healthcare, if you will, really emphasize on how we could maybe help and leverage more assisting those that can't. So I know the clinic down, I can't remember, it's pro-
Vasek Polak?
Vasek Polak Clinic, yeah. Vasek Polak Clinic, I think, still charges $50 per person without insurance, and they have, you know, full service there, x-rays, et cetera. And that's at $50. And I'd like to see how maybe we could bring them in and talk to them about maybe, you know, partnering with us for these types of services, because they already have the model, and they're already charging $50. And this, I don't know if it's still at 50, but these are the types of things I would really like for us to look at versus maybe already established, not-so-big entities. I think they have, I think they have already what we're looking for. And I think if we just tap on those, like Providence, Polak Clinic, those are some great, you know, starts there. Yeah.
Noted.
Yeah, and then again, you know, I understand that they're saying that, you know, COVID is over with. I don't necessarily believe that. I still believe it's going to be along, you know, something that's going to go on for years, just like, you know, the flu, the colds, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to make reference on that, because, you know.
Okay. Councilwoman Manning?
Yeah, so I was the person who suggested that we look into bringing more services because of the amount of residents that we have. And Medi-Cal is free. They can sign up to get Medi-Cal insurance. And when they get Medi-Cal insurance, it would cover them going to the clinic and getting free services. Even though we have the few, I still feel like we could use more because the amount of the people that we have in our city, and as time moves on, we're going to get more residents that are going to move into our city that need medical. So not just focusing on COVID, but just focusing on preventative care. And if we have more, more services for more people, because if you go to those clinics, the capacity in comparison to the amount of people we have in our city is just not enough. And the other thing is that those people have been exhausted for the last three years in terms of COVID. So I think it's important that we bring in more urgent care facilities, and then we push those locations to sign people up for Medi-Cal, which is free insurance, health insurance for everybody, so that they won't have to pay for preventative care. So that is, that was me that was asking for the city manager to look into that. And I still support that wholeheartedly because I believe that we do need it.
Councilwoman Mottler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so first of all, you have to define urgent care versus preventive care versus primary care. Because what we have in the city, I have to tell you, we do not have urgent care in the city. Most of the clinics that has been mentioned, they are primary care, and they do preventive care, okay? So that's what you need to distinguish. Because there is urgent care is places that, for example, Kaiser have the ER and the urgent care, and then they have primary care, and they have preventive care. So they discourage the people to go to the emergency, the ER, but to go to preventive care if they have some type of A or some type of broken finger to avoid the ER, because it's expensive if you go to ER. So in Hawthorne, we have, like the Vasek Polak Clinic, is a primary care clinic. It's not an urgent care. In Hawthorne, I'm going to say it again, we do not have urgent care. Because you remember Kaiser was trying to open urgent care down the street, and it didn't come. Because it's a different set of medical treatment.
Requirements.
Okay, and requirements.
That would have been great.
Because, you know, like I said, I have built school-based clinic that is a preventive care. So we do need in Hawthorne primary care. So our people in Hawthorne did not go to Little Company of Mary or the Torrance Memorial for urgent care or for ER. That is what we need to prevent. Now, another beautiful thing about California is we almost have healthcare for all. There is healthcare free called Cover California, Medi-Cal. And now the governor has signed that we can actually give care to immigrant population that have no papers, that have no green card, no citizenship, they can get medical care. So this is what we need to do in Hawthorne, is to open an urgent care, because that is what, for example, when the Vasek Polak opened, the Little Company of Mary came, and we went around visiting places to see, because they said they didn't want people to go to Little Company of Mary just because they had a headache or bellyache or something. So they, it was a-
I remember that.
You remember that? It was a preventive care, so people would not go to ER or even do not go to the urgent care. So Hawthorne, what we have is primary care physicians on those clinics and preventive care, but we do not have an urgent care. And that is what Ms. Manning and myself, I said, put more money in there because to bring an urgent care in Hawthorne is going to take millions of dollars. And because they have high-tech equipment that does, you know, CAT scan, does all those things beyond MRIs, that beyond the primary care clinics. So that is what we need in Hawthorne.
Yep. Motion?
Oh, motion. Sorry.
Motion second. I get both of you, it's appropriate that both of you guys do that.
Thank you.
Don't they have somebody to vote?
Okay, reset. Okay. It's important, you know, it's a blind vote.
Motion? Motion?
Motion made second. Everyone, please vote, guys.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mottler, please vote.
We vote?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Very good.
We're voting again? What's going on?
The voter reflects council and mayor voting yes.
Back and forth on it? Thank you, guys. And thank you for, you know, it's true, we don't have an urgent care. I have to go to Manhattan Beach to the Providence over there. So, yeah. Well, that's the closest one, really.
So now we have one down the street in El Segundo, you know, the, what do you call it?
Cedars?
Cedars and, yeah, and they combine with Torrance and Cedar.
Well, can I just, real quick?
Yeah.
Before I, before I came, or back in 2020, I was told that Kaiser was looking to come here.
Yes.
Yes, they were.
Okay.
But they had some- They had some very interesting requirements, though.
But there was a lot of, you know, ups and downs and demands, so they said, forget it.
Let's talk to them again.
It didn't seem like they were going to be good partners. Maybe we could look at somebody else. Okay. We have the city attorney's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects they have items 25 and 26 on the city attorney's consent calendar. Can you please proceed by introducing each item?
Item 25, claim of Lukey Martin Elotero Viera. Recommended motion, deny the claim of Lukey Martin Elotero Viera. Item 26, the City of Hawthorne has received settlement funds from the class action lawsuit of Long Beach Etal versus Monsanto Company Etal. The plaintiffs asserted that Monsanto manufactured a class of industrial chemicals called polychlorinated biphenols between 1930s and 1977, and alleged PCB-related impairments to the environment, including stormwater, stormwater and wastewater systems, water bodies, sediment, natural resources, fish and wildlife. The city council is asked to approve allocation of the settlement funds to existing PCB remediation and mitigation efforts undertaken by the city. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve allocation of the PCB settlement funds to the Public Works State MS4 Permit and Rainwater Quality Improvement Account to pay for ongoing PCB mitigation and remediation efforts such as the Enhanced Watershed Management Program for the Dominguez Watershed Management Area. Mr. Mayor, that concludes city attorney consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 25 and 26?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, excellent. Next, we have elected officials' reports and recommendations. City council colleagues, of city clerk and city treasurer, make sure you have everything listed that you want to mention. There's not going to be any go-bags. Somebody's giggling over there. We got to be efficient. We have to be efficient. The city treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. I want to say that, let's see, we attended the Ramona Park HOH meeting greet, so thank you for the invitation. So thank you for the invitation and thank you to all the residents that came out. Um, I attended the first annual Mother's Day event hosted by Councilwoman Manning and Reyes English. I'd like to say that was a beautiful event, ladies. It was, uh, great to see all the women come out and commune together and, uh, celebrate women. That was a really great day. And, um, congratulations to all the women that were honored. And, uh, a special thank you. I was, uh, congratulations, though, to Lisa Walberg. She was a, my former supervisor over at Weisburn. So I was really pleased to see that she, she got honored and deserved. I'd like to say thank you to the city manager. I am so glad to see Simran get some speed bumps. Um, so I'm glad to see that coming up. So thank you. That is all. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. City Clerk?
I too wanted to say it was amazing day Saturday. Uh, not only did I have the bi-weekly food drive, uh, but I had the opportunity to attend a Mother's Day brunch in Inglewood and then home here in Hawthorne with Mayor Protem, um, Reyes English and Councilwoman Manning. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. Uh, Tina McKinner was out. It was just a fabulous day. And I congratulate them on a wonderful, successful event. I wanted to, um, thank everyone for coming out to coffee with the clerk. Uh, it was really nice and I saw a lot of people come out and it was unexpected to have that many people come out. I really did appreciate it and it was nice just to have that time together. Um, also wanted to let you all know, I have started notarizing. I had two people come in and notarize, um, had their papers notarized. So I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that these services are available to our, um, our residents. If you would like to have notary services, you can please come into the clerk's office or call and make an appointment and we'll be happy to take care of you. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman- I won't have no go-bags. I know you was talking about me.
No, no, actually, well, now that you mention it, yeah, well, yeah.
All right, so, um, I wanna say that I was so, so, so happy to be, um, a part of the meet and greet in Ramona neighborhood. I think we had great discussions there. Um, I wanna thank the, uh, police department for supporting our meet and greets and always, um, being a good friend of ours when we go out to these things. It's great. Um, also, I'd like to say that I attended the, uh, Business Connect and definitely appreciate staff for putting that together. I think I ate way too much pizza. Um, also, um, the Mother's Day luncheon. So, so, so happy with the outcome. I wanna say thank you to everybody that attended, um, our honorees. And I wanna give a special acknowledgement to the city of Hawthorne for supporting that and my fellow council, uh, members for approving for us to get money to do that. Um, Cow Water Services, Northgate Market, Tectra Tech, C S G Consultants, D R C Engineering, Associated Souls and GTS. I also wanna give a special thanks to our wonderful city manager, Vaughn Norris, um, our Public Works Department, our Community Service Department, uh, Kewanabeui, uh, Recreational Department, Brenda Williams, our keynote speaker, Tenure Uduwa, um, Intuka, our mistress of ceremony, Ursula Moran, Congresswoman Maxine Waters. Thank you so much for attending. I really truly appreciate you for coming. Um, also Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office, Assemblywoman Tina McKinner. I just wanna say thank you all so much, uh, for being a part of our first annual Mother's Day. And we look forward to seeing you again. Um, stay tuned for our bike ride for Father's Day coming up next month. We can't wait. It's gonna be June seventeenth. And we're going to ride from here to Holly Park and then celebrate with Juneteenth with our council, um, councilman Alex Montero. So be on the lookout for those invites and sign up. Make sure you sign up. Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, just say thank you for the residents, for attending and for the listen to us on YouTube or the channel twenty-two. I just wanna say first, uh, K nine dinner is on May eighteen. So that's, that's mean is next week, next Thursday at five P M. The Hawthorne President's Council is gonna do the, uh, K nine dinner. Uh, that will benefit the police department and the K nine unit. So make sure you go there, uh, five o'clock. Uh, we're gonna have spaghetti with three different sauces and then, um, prices and dough prices. So last year we were able to raise fourteen thousand dollars. So I'm hoping, you know, we'll still raise above fourteen or fifteen thousand. So make sure you support and donate, please. Uh, I have to say, yes, that I'm sorry I missed the Mother's Day, uh, event because I was in the desert. Uh, I went to the, uh, SCAG meeting. Uh, and, um, basically it was about nine hundred people there from, you know, all Southern California, all, all these cities. And the main, the main topic was about sustainability, mobility, transportation. It was very exciting to talk about what's gonna happen in South Bay uh, from now until, uh, twenty twenty-eight, you know, the, uh, the World Cup coming, the Olympic. So all of them are talking about how to make people move faster in our neighborhoods, right? So mobility is one of them. Uh, even I talked to the mayor of, uh, of, um, Long Beach and, uh, Rex, and he even telling me that Long Beach is gonna have six events to hold in over there for the Olympic. So all the topic was about how to make people move fast and safe and so in our neighborhoods, right? Because we see all the, when the SO five have games or concerts, you know, how the traffic is back up. So we, we're going to do. The other good thing happened also in one of the meetings that I attend at the South Bay Cock uh, is, uh, we shift some money from the, the metro and the transportation to Inglewood project for the, they call it the RTC. Uh, so the, the, the trend that Inglewood is gonna build, you know, from the, uh, from the LAAC Center, uh, all the way around, you know, Century, go way, way to Prairie. It's gonna be like a moving people faster. So, uh, we, we shift millions of dollar, uh, to that project. So good things are coming to, to South Bay just to keep tune, uh, about it. It was happy to see families skating at the park. That was very, I was very excited, uh, to see, you know, families and children's having fun skating. So thank you, Vaughn. Thank you, Community Service Department for putting that together. I think that that was a great idea. So I hope it will continue every year because, uh, to see those kids having fun. So it was great. And Hawthorne Police Department was there passing popcorns and some other goodies. So thank you. So all the, you know, great things happening in, in Hawthorne. Um, and I want to say thank you, Vaughn, because you are putting this sitting on track. Uh, you know, by even talking about the, uh, the branding, right? So that is, is coming through, uh, from the, uh, economic develop and, and, and where the city is gonna go from now in the near future and maybe in five years, how, uh, we wanna be in forefront of, of the South Bay. You know, like we're the door for the South Bay, basically. Uh, and I want to say thank you to the chief and to the lieutenant's, uh, gats, right? For that presentation because I think that's the way we wanna show Hawthorne is, is in innovative mode of moving forward to better things, better technology, better, uh, for us to be equipped to, you know, to get, uh, this tea half faster. And because we see how people drive so fast in our streets, they cause accidents and, and then some of them keep moving. So maybe that technology will improve our, our capability to catch people in, uh, in bad actions. So thank you for that. Yeah, definitely, I'm all support about us to get a provider to, or to rebuild or restructure their primary care into an urgent care. So that is what we, we need in Hawthorne. So I think that could be a great thing. Uh, because, you know, like we, um, uh, Migo, Gordon Migo keep asking about for hospital, hospital, hospital. But sometimes, you know, urgent care can perform a lot of things that people would not need to go to the hospital. So that, uh, is one step that we are looking forward for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, okay? So there will be a good thing for Hawthorne. Again, you know, so thank you to all the staff. Thank you, Agbar. Thank you, Selena, uh, for also to attend the Clean Power Alliance when I was in the desert. Uh, thank you for that. And Agbar and Selena, I was going to send you an email since you're sitting right there. The South Bay Cock would like to know how you guys are doing the outreach for our food recycle waste, you know, the composting. Uh, because, uh, a lot of cities are having trouble about how people are recycling their food. And I, I was telling them how, you know, we have done an extensive outreach program and you guys have the model to teach some other cities. Okay, so contact Jackie, Jackie Bakarak or whatever her son, and, uh, and give her some of the tips that we've been using in our outreach to the community, okay? So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, just verify, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna be here on Thursday, uh, for the Bajah Workshop. And I'll be in Sacramento.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then, yeah, I got it. There'll be enough people here and, uh, it doesn't require a quorum. It's not a brown, it's not a brown, a governed, uh, meeting, so.
Right, it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, two, first, thank the community, the community for coming out and voicing your opinion and, uh, listening in on this, uh, meeting and participating in the process and giving us your, your feedback. And of course, those that are at home that are watching, um, you know, we, we depend on your input and your feedback for us to make great decisions. I wanna thank staff for your hard work and your dedication. I'm always impressed by how much I see our staff at, uh, events on the weekends and on the evenings, um, not getting paid any overtime, but really making a contribution to, to do the best that they can do to contribute to our city and really kind of stand for the success of our city. Uh, it's very impressive and I definitely notice you. I wanna thank our police department for, for your contribution, your hard work. Um, I say this all the time. I've said this, you know, periodically, though, I'm very impressed with the direction I've seen our police department going over the last really decade. Um, it's not anything new, but it's still always great to kinda see the, see the progress. And, um, especially in the recent recruitment efforts. Uh, so I wanna commend you for that. The Hawthorne Business Connect, I know there was an event, uh, yesterday, um, run by and hosted by staff. And I wanna congratulate you for the efforts that, that you guys put in holding, hosting that event. When I encourage you to continue with your outreach and your efforts to reach out to our business community and potential businesses. And I wanna offer my assistance in whatever way I can in promoting, um, those services and, and maybe organizing some future events. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I wanna contribute my support in, uh, negotiating a contract with Tri-Pappy Smith and bringing that to the city council for, for evaluation and vote. I would like to also ask for an update, uh, on our commissions, uh, the vacancies and any applications that might be in on those, um, on those commissions. And if, uh, if you can look into the issue that one of my residents brought up about, um, only being, being able to build on forty-five percent of a piece of property. If you can just provide me with a report or just educate me on that. And, um, curious to see, is, is that something we should, uh, address or look into and make any changes to? But that's pretty much it. Thanks for coming out. It's great seeing everybody, uh, seeing some, some new faces. We're really not new faces, some old new faces. Uh, I forgot your name, but the gentleman in a couple rows back, you represent our, um, our, um-
Library.
Our library.
Daniel.
Haven't seen you in quite some time, though. Welcome back to our council meeting. And, uh, it was good to see, you know, all of our, our, our regular faces here at our council meeting. Uh, I'll see you guys in the next one.
Okay, and before we go to Mayor Protem, Daniel, make sure you, can you like come on the agenda so that you could give us a presentation on what's going on? You reopened and we need to get the good news, please. Okay, Mayor Protem?
Yep. Thank you so much. Uh, appreciate all the presentations that were made tonight. I think the, the water increase is, uh, overdue and, and we'll have an opportunity to have public comment in that. And I believe, uh, Vaughn, that's in June, right? In June. So we'll make sure that, um, the community at large is aware and Channel twenty-two is, um, broadcasting that, um, at home for our viewers. Um, just want to lend my support for May being, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month. Very important for that. I'd like to go back and see if we could add our April for Child Abuse Awareness Month for April. That's something that we missed, um, and we need to, uh, support, support that as well. Thank you for attending the SCAG meeting, Councilmember Montero. Um, Business Connect, thank you staff for hosting that. Uh, I hope to get more attendees and more importantly, make this even broader. Uh, but thank you for your efforts there. The K nine dinner, look forward to that on May nineteenth. Or eighteenth, excuse me, and I wrote down. Um, I'd like to see if council would be willing to do a fentanyl crisis letter of support to our legislators, uh, urging our legislators to do more about fentanyl. And that's kind of like a general consensus with, um, L.A. County, um, cities of governments. So I'm gonna go ahead and instruct, um, Vaughn, if we get a letter of support of fentanyl, ask whomever would like to sign on and get that to our legislators. But I think that's with, um, I think you were notified on that, too. You were CC'd on that. So if we could move with that. Also wanna make mention, um, for our budget that's coming up, the workshop, please make sure to attend that. That's informative and, um, always good to know how your money's being spent. More importantly, um, the Salvation Army of Torrance Corp has, is hosting a Summer Share Your Voice. It's a competition. The Salvation Army, um, is, is doing that, uh, in the South Bay at large. So if anyone's interested in that, uh, it's for junior high and high school students in the South Bay area. And, uh, top four winners would have an opportunity to, um, have an award-winning, uh, Grammy award-winning engineer, uh, and his team, uh, produce and, uh, get your, get you off to, uh, a great start in, as a singer. So that information, I'll give it to Vaughn so we could post that, um, in just general, um, community events and things happening around the South Bay. Let's see. Look forward to the bike ride. I don't know how we're gonna, are you gonna ride the bike? Oh, I have to see this. Okay.
With my four-inch heels.
Okay, June seventeen.
I thought it was the father was gonna ride the bike.
I, I'd like to, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna see how we can do that. Um, let's see. Look, thank you, police and, and, and bringing us your, your, um, Cessna information. That was very valuable and, and insightful. Thank you for that. Um, there's also, uh, something that I'd like to propose with, since we have our, um, shelter housing. I'd like to propose that we do a toile- toiletry drive so that we could be able to ask the community to assist us with, um, supplying some of the needs there. Uh, I know we have a washer and dryer. It'd be great if we could get some donations for laundry soap, um, and things like this, downy. Um, I'd like to also see how we could maybe get some products for those that are currently housed there, whether it be, um, you know, socks, toothpaste, toothbrush, mouthwash, essentials in toiletries. And if maybe we could put that on by, by putting something here in our lobby, one at the memorial center, one at the police station, and just have a wide, um, toiletry, um, drive to, uh, assist with our, um, pellet shelter housing, uh, and our homeless. Um, thank you to all of you that came out this past Saturday for the Mother's Day event. That was a great and successful event. Thank you, Camp Katrina Manning for that, Councilmember Manning. Um, still hearing a lot of great reviews from that, a lot of great calls and, um, you know, folks wanna see more, right? It's a, it's a heavy undertaking and, uh, you know, efforts, uh, especially support from the council, it's greatly appreciated. And, uh, look forward to sharing, um, more. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, man, that's- No, guys, uh, thank you, guys, uh, my city, city council colleagues, uh, city tre- uh, city treasurer, city clerk, for your comments and thank you all for being here. Um, I want to echo on all my counterparts, uh, kudos to our city staff and our police department. You guys are doing great, moving us along through the leadership of our city manager and our city attorney and all the department heads. So thank you. Um, I like the idea of the toiletry drive. Um, we could easily ask what some of the like vendors, like the, you know, the, uh, the trash services or vendors that support the city to, they'll easily stock up everything, but I think like a, a homegrown, uh, community-based type of, uh, drive would be really cool because then everybody's invested in helping solve the problem. So I think it's best that we kind of focus it that way as opposed to just filling in the need and, you know, we just need everybody to understand what's going on in the situation. Um, I want to give kudos to, uh, my colleagues, the city clerk, uh, the city treasurer and Councilwoman, uh, Katrina Manning for their Ramona HOA outreach event. I got in some, uh, great comments from community members that were there and, uh, they really appreciate you doing that. So I understand you're going to be moving on, all three of you are going to be going to the other sectors of the city, so, uh, that's been very popular. Also, uh, congratulate the city clerk on her food drive, uh, continuing that and keeping that moving along. So, uh, very appreciative crowd out there, uh, people who are in need, so, uh, uh, want to give you kudos for that. And all your volunteers, thank, we thank them for stepping up and all the people who are donating the food, right? So that's important too. That's the most important essential e- element of being able to do it, so, um, that sounds great, so thank you. Um, the Mother's Day event, uh, goes without saying, I was there in attendance in the back. Uh, so I want to give kudos to my colleagues, uh, Councilwoman Katrina Manning and Mayor Protem and G. Reyes English on assembly, such a great event. It was just, uh, I was walking around to the tables and I was talking and, uh, people were just so appreciative. They were mingling, they were getting to know each other, people that they didn't know, they were walking from table to table, mingling with, uh, state and federal, uh, elected officials to them was a big deal in, in good company, good fellowship, right? So everybody had a great time and the food was great. I, I held back because I had a, a lunch meeting after, so I held back on the food, but it looked very delicious, so, uh, kudos to that and, uh, any other ideas you guys have with regards to, uh, unique events like that? Let's keep them going. This sounds like it's, it's going to definitely be an annual event. So let me check off these things so I don't get to my ten minutes, right? And then you're going to come after me. Uh, Councilmember Montero, thank you for going out to SCAG's meeting out in the desert. Uh, appreciate that and I want to just remind my council colleagues that any commission or committee that you guys are members of, uh, make sure you go out and participate and give us a report. Uh, you know, we'll support you and whatever you need to be able to make it to those meetings, so just make sure you guys keep to your duties on that stuff, okay? City clerk and, uh, city treasurer as well. You guys have media, uh, different organizations to participate in, so, uh, please continue with that. I've read, what is it? Oh, okay, um, and this is a directive, uh, Mr. City Manager, if you can engage the Islamic Center of Hawthorne, uh, they're, uh, purchasing the old Country Harvest, the.
Hometown buffet.
It was, it was a Country Harvest before that. It was called Country Harvest before, Hometown Buffet, it became Hometown Buffet. I only call it Country Harvest because my brother used to work there and we, my dad had to go pick him up, so we called it Country Harvest, Country Harvest. He used to like, uh, he used to like, what he could cut the chickens up and stuff on the bo, you know, the back. So preparing the food, he used to be a food prep, so, uh, stories about that place that my brother has. Um, but if you could engage them for the purpose of seeing how we can, uh, work with them and just kind of give them our, the city's perspective on things that they could put in that location, that, uh, personally I, I definitely see an opportunity for, uh, uh, tax, tax, a tax base for the city right there with any businesses and commercial endeavors that they have. I know that they want to fuse that with, uh, usage on the basement floor, um, for their congregation, but on the top floor they want to kind of look at something commercial, so if you could reach out to them and close the loop, please. So that was that. And I attended the National, Naleo, National Association Latino Elected Officials, uh, Policy Institute on Economic Mobility in the city of New York. Uh, and, uh, the conversation was on economic mobility. Sounds kind of like, what does that mean? So it's like people, individuals, friends, family, ourselves, being able to rise economically, you know, make more money, basically, be able to, um, subsist. And, uh, it focused on minorities in particular, but this applies to everybody else in that, uh, there's the traditional hospitality areas, the construction fields and, uh, other service type of oriented fields that, um, uh, people of color, minorities, uh, we end up, uh, being part of. But the message that I gained there was that there's more opportunity other than that. There's the construction, different aspects of construction beyond the regular just build a house, larger scale, um, union type of jobs through the labors, through the, through the carpenters' u- union, trade jobs where you become an apprentice and you actually make a lot of money under specific guidelines and contracts, right? Uh, prevailing wage type of jobs, so there's a lot of opportunities. And they talked the different sectors at, in which people could participate. Electrification, basically electrification sector, you know, being electrical worker, being able to go out and, uh, connect things and plug things up and making sure everything's good per code, you know? Uh, making sure that things work and not just the fly-by-night, you pick up somebody at the local wherever and they'd come and do a ragtag job and they're not licensed, so being a licensed electrical worker and participating in a large scope of electrical work. And then the, the one that they really mentioned, I didn't, I didn't think about it, is like broadband, being able to have the infrastructure for broadband. And they, 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 they're, they don't have the workers for that specific field and that's a lot of money that's, uh, that's being dropped in there so that we can connect and be able to communicate. So there's a lot of opportunities. And, uh, they talked about the different grants that cities, uh, the workforce investment boards could be, uh, applying for and like three or four different types of grants. And I contacted South Bay Web, Jan Vogel and his people over there and said, they're already on it. So they're already on it, so, you know, we have a great workforce investment board, guys, and we need to celebrate them and support them. I wish they were still in the city of Hawthorne, but certain things happened before that, you know, kind of moved them out of Hawthorne as being their home base. So, thank you guys all for sticking it out with us. Uh, it was a relatively short meeting compared to others and, uh, want to give kudos to everybody here on council and, uh, staff, uh, council and, uh, elected officials and staff once more and our commissioners who are here in this, in the house too.
Hey, uh, Mr. Mayor.
What did we say?
I don't know her name, I don't know his name, but Hugo Rojas' dad passed away, okay, last week, so, yeah.
You know what, actually, that's, uh, let's, so let's, uh, let's close the meeting in honor of Mr. Hugo Rojas Senior. His name is Hugo Rojas Senior. So, uh, if you guys could send your condolences, pray for him, send your condolences if you, however you know. Okay, Mr. Hugo Rojas Senior, rest in peace. Okay, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-eight.